Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, May 6th, 2019, and this will be followed by a meeting of the Cunningham Town Board. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next up is approval of minutes from two previous meetings, April 15th, 2019, and an April 22nd special meeting of the Urbana City Council. Is there a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
I'll second it.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Dean. Are there any corrections?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. Next up is public input. I have one card from the public for the council meeting. That's from Bishop King James and Reverend Evelyn B. Underwood. Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood. They choose not to address members, but they've expressed that they're continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council during public input? I don't see any unfinished business before the council. Reports of officers. I think we have one from Preston James. Oh, and then followed by Libby Tyler. Libby Horowitz, sorry.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Hello, Preston.
All right, all right, okay. Now we can go. All right, so, good evening. Like I said, my name is Preston James. I work in the Human Relations Department. I'm the Community Relations Specialist is my job title. I want to kind of just give you a little information on some things that we've been working on leading up. The first one we're going to speak about is a pilot program. Right now, we're calling it the Urbana Youth High School Program. It is modeled after the Goal-getters Program in Champaign, if any of you are familiar with that. It was a collaboration between the City of Champaign, the Champaign County Community Coalition, and the Unit 4. This one would be a collaboration, if everything goes through, between the City of Urbana, District 1, I mean, yeah, USD 116, and the Community Coalition as well. The purpose of the program is to provide targeted support, training, and guidance to some of our more challenged students at USD 116. The objective is of this program is to provide behavioral guidance, membership, social-emotional mentorship, I mean, social-emotional learning opportunities, family-focused activities, and positive community experiences. I stated who it was collaboration between. We're looking to identify six current freshmen and six incoming freshmen from the Urbana High School and the Urbana Middle School. That's through the District 116 staff at the high school and at the middle school. The, there is a stipend included in this program as well. It is a two-month program over the summer, which they would meet twice a week. Right now, we have it slotted for Tuesdays and Thursdays, except for the first week will be a Tuesday and Wednesday. The time slot would be from 5:30 to 8:00, you know, right when they get into their trouble hour for a lot of them. We have space accommodations. We have an agreement pending the approval from all parties with the Urbana connections, neighborhood connections. There will be a volunteer requirement for these youth. Some of the things that the presenters will be coming in to present on would be trauma, mental health services, a reality check, somebody who has been in trouble and can give them a little wisdom on not taking that same road, peer conflict resolution, cultural awareness, reading and writing prompts, police contact, employment and training opportunity, interpersonal relationships, and so on. The plan for this, hopefully if everything goes well, we're presenting to the Urbana School Board tomorrow evening with this, with leadership from Urbana High School. If this goes well, the plan is for us to start June 4th with a kickoff barbecue with the families and the students on June 1st. So, before I move on to the next thing, are there any questions about the information I just provided?
Bill?
Yes, sir. Have you said anything about funding? Who's funding this?
Well, it's going to be funded, it'd be a collaboration between the City of Urbana, and that funding would come from the outreach portion that we have in the Human Relations Department. It's not asked for additional funding or budget amendments. The Community Coalition has already agreed, and we're just pending the Urbana District 116 funding.
Do you know what the total budget is for this?
Yes, I do. So, the total budget would be $10,002. That includes the summer and nine sessions during the school year, because you would meet once a month with them as well during the school year. How that breaks down is the stipends, there's supplies and space and field trip funding, and then food as well.
Mary Alice, and then Eric, and then...
So, staffing. Who's providing all the staffing and oversight of the program? Are you? Is that...
It's going to be myself, Jorge Elvire, Mr. Henderson from the school, and a bunch of volunteers that have agreed to assist us with this. We've also, while I've been in talks with Reverend Carruthers about collaborating programs to help each other, so, it's going to be, it's going to be a work in progress, but I think we're going to be able to get it done.
Thank you.
Eric, did you have a question?
Sure. So, to my eyes, this looks and sounds very good, but I'm not an expert. So, in that context, I'll ask, are there programs in other cities that would serve sort of as a model for how to make this work and how well it works that...
Absolutely.
...one could access?
So, we modeled this program. I worked closely with Sheldon Turner and Tracy Parsons over there in Champaign with their Goal- getter program, which they've run this whole past year, and this, they're going into their second year of the program. I actually attend their meetings, but more as a example mentor-type setting when I attend the Goal-getter program. So, we modeled it off of that with a little Urbana twist.
The kids will select their own name for the program?
Yes, and model.
Sharice?
So, how is District 116 integrated into this?
Well, because it's dealing with Urbana...
Well, like, what I mean is, like, is the school board, will they have a say, or does the superintendent, or...
Well, they absolutely have a say on whether they're going to put their third in.
Okay.
As far as, it's a collaboration with the schools, so I've been working with the administration at the high school and the middle school.
Okay.
I've also had several meetings with Dr. Williams in reference to this, Janice Mitchell...
Todd, what's his name?
How did I forget her name? Another person at the middle school.
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering, because...
Lynda Gibbons.
Okay, because I know that, so, this is a collaboration with the city and the district?
And the Coalition, correct.
And the Coalition, okay.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Bill?
So, is participation completely voluntary? Are they, nobody is, like, sentenced to this, right?
No, this is not probation or parole. I can't make them come, but the financial aspect kind of helps them along that way. Because if they don't complete the program, and I didn't mention this earlier, they will have contracts assigned, them and their parents, along with us, as far as the staff involved. And if they don't complete the requirements, then each time, each thing that they do not complete, their stipend goes down.
Okay, so that, that's the incentive. So, in Champaign, has there been more demand? How many, how many participants are there in Champaign?
Well, they had a lot more than we're going to be able to have. But I think they started, and I, don't quote me on the number, but I know it was over 30.
If we have, like, 15 or 20 people interested in only 12 slots, how do you pick?
Well, we're going to narrow it down to the most active. If the, if we have 15 that say yes, then we're going to go with the top 12 based on staff contacts, outside-city, community contact. And then, during the school year, we're able to include them in, and if the program is highly successful, we may try to find some other funding avenues to continue.
Okay, thanks.
Eric, and then Sharice?
What would be, suppose you have, as a hypothetical, 15 youngsters who look motivated and in a position to really benefit from this, but you've only got 12 slots. What would be the incremental cost of adding the additional youngsters?
If we kept the stipends the same, we would have to add another 1,500.
Another 1,500 for three, so about $500 a kid?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you get in a situation like that, I don't know, reach out. I just hate to think about a few kids. So, I, here's what I'm mindful of. I know a number of years ago, Naomi's way, way my better half, but she, she took note that in Martin Luther King scholarships, there was somebody who got an honorable mention but didn't get any funding. So, she said, "Oh, my gosh," to me, "we've got to step forward and fund that extra kid, because that's a terrible situation to be in." I mean, it's great that they've got the honor, but it's so, must be so frustrating. So, I would just ask you to, if you have kids in that situation, a few kids in that situation, please, you know, reach out to us, or, you know, whatever. Let's try to, let's try to get them in there.
Greatly appreciate that.
Sharice?
What kind of activities or curriculum or whatever you're going to use, what does that entail?
So, as far as the curriculum, we have two books. Are you talking about academic, or are you talking about just...
I'm talking about, well, because you said we're going to meet, we're, twice a week. Are they going to be out in the neighborhood, getting familiar with people that, you know, that they kind of probably need to be familiar with? Or are they going, is it one of these things where they have a curriculum, where they have in-class activity, so to speak, that they have to complete? Or is it something that they would have to do on those three days if they're not there? Will they be supervised in doing, you know, if they're out? I know you said a field trip and, and something like that. So, what, not, you know, written in stone, but what, what is the idea of how you're going to put this forward?
So, that's an excellent question. The, so, we have it broken down in time slots, so, for the proposal, at least. The first time that they're there, they'll have a meal. We're going to provide a meal each time they come, and a presenter will be coming in a majority of the time. The field trips would be like to Shawn Williams Funeral Home, the Coroner's Office, JDC, the Housing Authority, because Mr. Northern would like them to come there so that he can present to them there and show them around. So, those would be kind of the field trips. We also are going to have strongly suggest midnight basketball volunteering. Can't necessarily make them, you know, if they don't want to come, they, you know, you just lose some money, but there's, most of the, most of the time, the presenters will be coming to them at Urbana Connections.
Okay, so, they'll, they'll be, will there, will there be any other requirements other than them being, you know, going to field trip?
Stay self out of trouble.
Yeah, well, I know, okay.
There's definitely a strong requirement, but there's, there's a couple of books that they're going to read and have writing prompts over.
Uh-huh.
Let me see if I have that right in front of me. So, one of them is going to be, the summer book is going to be Sick, I mean, Dope Sick by Walter Dean Myers.
Okay.
And then, the fall book is going to be, the proposed fall book is going to be Long Way Down by Jason Reynolds.
Okay. Dope Sick?
Yes. D-O-P-E-S, yes.
And the Long Way Down? These are tween books, or...
Yeah, they're, they're what I would consider easy-read books.
Okay.
They're not going to have super color fragilistic, SBI doses in them.
Okay.
They're going to have, you know, more easier reading and things that relate to them, and the things that they may be going through.
Okay. The other question I have is, is there some type of, at the end of the program, some type of, you know, graduation or certificate, something that they get to say that, "You did this, and, and now we hope you don't, you know, get in any more trouble."
Well, the, the, that's another good question. So, there will be a, at the end of the summer, after Mayor Marlin comes in, and then the administration come in to talk to them about expectations, city expectations as well as district expectations. There will be a kind of a promotion that's still in the works, though, as far as the structuring of that. But it is kind of a situation where hopefully it'd be a continuum, so that, you know, it continues on throughout the school year. They continue to come, and then they bring their other people who are out there causing disruptions, but they may not be the top ones at the time. Then, we can continue that with them and have a end-of-year celebration with them. But the key to them, the thing they're going to care about more than that celebration is that check.
You hope.
That they're going, "Well, yeah." You know, I'm at the school every day now since, for the past couple of months, and the one thing I hear more than anything else is money.
Mm-hmm.
They, they care more about that money than they do about a lot of other different things.
Are, will there be any other kind of community interaction, meaning, and this is, this is just me, okay? I think that the children should interact more with the community where they are and understand the civics of being in a society. In other words, everybody, there are rules that everybody has to abide by, and without it being, like, on record, or meaning that, you know, the judge says you have to do this, but just for them to get to know their neighbors, people around them that live in the same area that they live in, you know, go and help somebody to take their garbage out, go in, help someone in their yard, go, you know, understand that you, you affect, what your behavior does affects the people that are around you. Is there any kind of, anything like that that's going to be...
That sounds like a block party within your neighborhood that we can come to and assist.
Well, I'm, all I'm saying is that it seems like it would, I think it would, they, they might better understand how they're, how, what, what they're going to inherit.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And maybe what they're going to inherit isn't that great, but only they can make it better. And so, if you want to make it better, you start when you're young, and you try to, you try to, to actually contribute. And one way to contribute is to get to know the people around you and help the people around you. And I didn't know if that was going to be part of, you know...
That hasn't, that has not been, as far as that specific activity, has not been implemented at this time, but we definitely have room to talk.
Okey-dokey.
Any other questions? Okay. I think you had one other topic you wanted to...
Yes, so, I almost forgot there. So, as of, as you guys know, most of you were here, I believe, when we did the pedestrian, the prospective insights of a traffic stop. We're doing the second addition to that prospective series, starting actually tomorrow. Hopefully, it doesn't rain too bad on us, but we have six, we have identified six Urbana High School students, two females and four males, and three of our officers are going to start the action portion of the pedestrian stop video tomorrow by the high school. And then, as, as most of you know who've watched the video, there's a discussion part that the students are involved in to speak about the actions and the woulda, coulda, shouldas with the officers as well. And that's very impactful. That's the most impactful thing I heard every time somebody watched the video. Man, I love the discussion part. So, we, the perspect, the proposed start time for the recording is tomorrow, and hopefully the rain hold off. So, just wanted to give you that information.
Thank you very much, Preston.
All right, thank you.
Libby Horowitz.
Good evening, Libby Horowitz, Economic Development Coordinator. I was recently here, so not many major updates. Satara has reopened after a transition ownership, extensive remodeling, as well as repair of the fire that happened in 2017. Additionally, Green Street Realty has closed on 200 South Vine, and they hope to complete demolition in the upcoming weeks. Lastly, Matt Cho was recently awarded the Economic Development Impact Award at the Champaign County Innovation Celebration for his projects in downtown. There are, however, many events coming up that I would encourage people to attend, starting with tomorrow, which is an information session at SBDC as part of Small Business Week. Economic Development will be giving a presentation on incentives available and help that the program can give to new businesses starting. On May 12th, the first Urbana Neighborhood, Think Urbana Neighborhood Tour will be at Addy's Bar and Grill. That is a series of sponsored tours of different developments in Urbana to promote the Think Urbana program. Atkins Group is sponsoring that program, and there will be a golf cart tour and drinks to follow, and that is free and open to the public. After that event is the May 15th, the Visit Champaign County Annual Toast to Tourism. And on May 19th is the Urbana Arts and Culture Young Artist Studio. A new event was just created on the 21st in the morning, 8 to 9. We will be sponsoring the Coffee with a Builder with the Home Builders Association, so that's also to promote the Think Urbana program. And we will be talking a little bit about Think Urbana, as well as Citizen Serve, and how that can impact developers. Also, on May 21st will be the Business and Development Luncheon, and that's going to be a panel discussion on creativity and the arts in downtown Urbana. On May 25th is the Urbana's Downtown Get Down, and that will be the premiere of that event, and that will be ongoing throughout the summer. And that's going to feature artists and makerspaces and different musical events as well. And then, May 28th is the Urbana Association's Connections Over Cocktails. Also, the Farmer's Market started this last weekend and is now open for the season. Thank you.
Any questions for Libby? Sharice?
When is the Downtown Get Down again?
Sorry about that. The first one is Saturday, May 15th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
25th.
25th, thank you.
Okay. And... Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Libby. Any other reports of officers? Are there reports of standing committees? Dennis?
Yeah, I attended the, the annual meeting of the Illinois Sister Cities Association in Roselle, Illinois. It was probably one of the best sets of workshops I've attended, really good, excellent ones that were offered to the, the people who are participating. And it's a city that has a Polish sister city, and the theme was Polish and Polish foods. And we met, actually, on Friday. It was Polish Constitution Day, so they were celebrating what would be like their 4th of July. And at the end of the meeting, I ended up being elected to the state board, so I'm going to be serving another three-year term. So, anyway, so it was a good event, and we're staying connected with our sister cities across Illinois.
Thank you.
Reports of special committees? Okay, we move on to new business. First item is Resolution Number 2019-05-009R, which is a resolution accepting a law enforcement camera grant from the Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standards Board. You have a memo in your packet. Chief Seraphin, did you want to make any comments on this, or this is standard?
Only a third voice.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the chief? Mary Alice?
Come on up. Hey, if it's money, I got a question.
I'll try to have an answer.
All right, so, we have $125,000 that's been awarded as a grant to pay for some of the recent equipment that we purchased, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, where is $125,000 going? I mean, we, we, is it going back into the equipment fund that we have that...
Correct.
Okay, so it is...
They wouldn't go to my vacation fund?
Okay.
So, yes, it's going in, back into the vehicle equipment replacement fund?
The VERF, gotcha.
Correct.
That's just, that's all I want to, thank you. Now...
Any other questions? Jared?
Chief Seraphin, so are we going to get a chance for demonstration sometime after everything gets implemented to see maybe what, what was before? I know, I know a little bit because I've been down and looked at what was before, but I haven't seen any of the new stuff, so...
So, the answer to that is yes, we can, we can, we can do that right now. The body cameras were all pushed out sometime after the 1st of the year. The squad cars didn't come quite as soon as we wanted them. We were going to try to do it all as a rollout together. I think that's what we presented last fall, but we elected to go ahead and get the body cameras out. So, right now, some of the officers have two systems. Their squad car is one system, and their body camera is another. As each car gets turned over, we're slowly getting away from that issue. So, yes, we should be able to come up with one of those staff reports and have a little demo, and maybe a little before and after.
Sure, that'd be cool.
Cool.
Sharice?
Where is the information stored? And does this grant cover the storage?
So, this grant covers, it, this grant covers, it was specifically designed for the cameras, the cameras and the install and associated infrastructure at a certain amount for each squad car, and then for each body-worn camera. So, we had 13 squads at 5752, 57 body-worn cameras at 895, and that all adds up to 125,791. Currently, the camera footage and all the filed events is, is in a server in our evidence vault.
Okey-dokey. And someone maintains that and makes...
Correct.
Checks for digital degradation and all that?
Yes, we have that, we, yes, I'm very confident in how we got that covered.
Okay.
All right.
Eric?
I remember some time ago, when the issue of body cameras first came up, that one of the major challenges was going to be... of the major challenges was gonna be handling the data, but by virtue of not hearing anything about that this time around, I'm guessing that that challenge has been met, and that's, and everything's okay with that.
At this point, I will say so far, so good. I think we're working on ways to be efficient with regards to how we share that data with, for instance, the state's attorney's office. I know there's a project underway where we, they can access the system directly themselves. I know that other agencies have done, things have been burned to hard drives, and people walk them across streets and whatnot, and we're trying to avoid, we're trying to avoid that, but so far, so, so far, so good, I think. I think we're in a, in a good place, but we will keep monitoring that.
Jared?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move Resolution Number 2019-05-009R, Resolution Accepting a Law Enforcement Camera Grant from the Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standards Board for approval.
Second. Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And move.
Yes. That motion passes. Thank you.
Next up are some appointments to boards and commissions. I have three tonight. First is for the Urbana Free Library Board, Guadalupe Mejia, term ending June 30th, 2021. She is the Chief of Optometry at the VA Eliana Healthcare System in Danville, specializes in the rehab of people with blindness and vision impairment. Her expertise lies in accommodation, educational resources, community independence for persons with visual disabilities, and we thought she would make an excellent addition to the library board, both in terms of bringing, you know, a different perspective, but different professional expertise to the board in terms of reaching the visually impaired. Second nomination is for Jacob Torres. He's a PhD student in entomology at the U of I. He's a strong interest in urban ecology and the marriage of ecological and sustainable land practices, and this is for an appointment to the Tree Commission. And then the third appointment is for the Community Development Commission, Patricia Jones, term ending June 30th, 2021. She's an Associate Director for Research at the Beckman Institute for Advanced Science and Technology at the U of I. She's interested in contributing to community development at the municipal level. So, I would entertain a motion for these three appointments.
I'll move approval of these three appointments.
I'll second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Dennis. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. We have one other appointment, and this is for the position of Temporary Lieutenant with Sergeant Matthew Bane. Matthew Bane is a nineteen-year veteran of the Urbana Police Department, most recently assigned as sergeant in the Criminal Investigations Division. He's highly respected by his peers, and he's exhibited tremendous skill and dedication throughout his career. His resume was included in your packet, and Sergeant Bane is with us tonight, if you wanna wave. I'll entertain a motion for this appointment.
I would like to take the honor to make the motion for that appointment personally.
Moved by Dean.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jared. Are there any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Lieutenant Bane. With no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.